I'll call this meeting over on Monday, June the 6th. Want to welcome everyone. I see Lee Delbridge out there, who is the pastor of the Smyrna Christian Church. He was probably given the invocation more than any pastor in our community. And Lee, we're always glad to see you and glad that you do it. So at this time, would everyone please rise? And we'll follow that with pledge allegiance. So, thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the privilege we have to be here. We ask that you be with these city leaders and that you give them wisdom and that you give them courage so that they will know what they should do and have the courage to do it. We thank you for life. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's in the name of Jesus we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are looking for a church that want to change, 910 Concord Road. Great place out next to Regions and in front of the, well, it used to be Brown Elementary, but it's a good little church. June the 6th, it's D-Day, I believe.
Yes, sir.
How many years ago was that? I know I was a twinkle in my daddy's eye, but that's a great day for America and a great day for all the veterans and folks that were the greatest generation. Agenda changes. I don't believe that we have any mayor report unless there's someone here that's running for elected position or an office. I know that there is a runoff election, I believe. Anyone here for that? Okay? We'll move on into the department reports. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have three department head reports. One from our community liaison that's going to be speaking on the vision process, Kelsey. And then we have Parks and Rec, Travis is here. And then we have the Fire Department. I think both chief and deputy chief are here. And we'll be starting tonight with Ms. Kelsey Scott to talk about our vision process.
Hello.
Hi, Kelsey.
Hello. Thank you all for having me. All right. So, the vision process isn't actually a department in our city, but it is an initiative that has come out of our city. Like Mike Jones has mentioned, my name is Kelsey Scott. I am our community liaison, so I've been working with the citizens who have been implementing the vision plan. Back in 2014, our city did a wonderful community assessment that talked to different individuals throughout our city to find out what the citizens of Smyrna actually want to see in our community over the next 10 years. And out of that came a 55-page vision plan, the full version of which can be found on our city website. And it consists of 16 overarching goals and 52 concrete initiatives. These initiatives are now in the implementation stage, and I've been working with the five work groups who are implementing them. And so, we'll go through the current initiatives that they've been working on. However, there are lots more that will be implemented over the next five to 10 years. So, if there are any citizens who are interested, we are always looking for additional input and volunteers. All right. So, the community assessment actually came out with a vision mission statement, and this is our guiding force and centers and focuses all of our efforts. Each work group really correlates to one of the main points in this mission statement, which is that Smyrna will achieve the highest levels of community attachment and commitment by providing academic excellence for our children, fully involving our citizens in all aspects of the community, creating leadership opportunities for all residents, establishing high expectations for our quality of life and place, and creating a strong image and identity for our community. Now, the first group is quality of place, and there are really two different branches of this group. There's one side of it which consists of increasing opportunities for recreation and arts and culture throughout our city. And then the other side, which is really advocating for better and increased modes of transportation, walkability, and aging in place in our city. The first initiative that this group has taken on is to establish an advisory arts and culture council, which it has actually done. It's called the Smyrna Arts and Culture Council, and they received their 501(c)(3) this past week. So, they are a viable nonprofit in our city with programs such as a concert series, lecture series, Halloween storytelling event, graphic displays, and a historical trail that they're working on. And on the other side, the transportation, transit, walkability aspect of this group has been evaluating the feasibility of a shuttle service between the Braves Stadium and Smyrna. They've determined that this work is being done through the Spring Road Corridor Study that our Community Development Department has been working on, and so they'll be working with them for this initiative. The second work group is involvement and leadership. They've been charged with building connections between members of our community and helping those members really getting plugged in and engaged. The first initiative that they've taken on is to encourage more volunteer engagement. They're currently in the idea phase, but their proposals are really great and include an updated welcome kit for new citizens, creating additional volunteer recognition opportunities, a volunteer task force, and creating a full list of volunteer opportunities for our citizens. They've also been looking into strengthening Smyrna's engagement in representative governance. Again, they're in the idea phase, but they're looking to increase voter awareness by explaining wards, terms, timing, et cetera, and then other leadership opportunities in Smyrna. All right. Our next group is image and identity. This group is really responsible for telling the story of Smyrna from a citizen's perspective. The first initiative that they've been working on is to create gateways into Smyrna that are recognizable and distinct, and they will be working with our Community Development Department on this. They see themselves as really gathering the citizen voice to make sure that those gateways are what our citizens want to see. And they've also been working on an initiative on an internal communications plan and have some really fun, neat ideas, such as a hashtag campaign to organize the photos and videos of our city. So, if you see hashtag love my Smyrna, that's where that comes from. And then they're also looking for a blogger or photographer to showcase interesting individuals in our city, and I think we might have found one. All right. Our next group is Smyrna Schools, which is pretty self-explanatory. They've been tasked with tackling all the initiatives that are related to ensuring our schools are well-known for their high-quality instruction. The first initiative that they've taken on is to make sure our parents and stakeholders are represented at the Board of Education level, and they actually hosted a really successful meeting in these chambers back in March with the Board and had over 150 stakeholders and leaders at that meeting. All right. They've also been tasked with building connections with local technology groups and our schools. To do this, they've been looking into implementing the Inventure Challenge into our schools. Some of our schools are actually already participating in this national competition, including Nickajack Elementary, and one of their teams actually came in second place at the national level this year, so we're very proud of them. All right. And lastly, for this group, they've been looking to tell the success stories of Smyrna Public Schools, so they've been working with the Wave of Excellence to do so. All right. The last group is community and economic development. This group has a wide range of initiatives, and the first one that they've been tackling is to evaluate the competitiveness of our city initiatives for new mixed-use developments. They met with our Community Development staff to learn what's already happening in our city, what we're already doing, and that's where they learned about the Spring Road Corridor Study and were really excited about it and have decided to host one of the community forums for that study so that they can ensure the citizen voice is heard and they can recruit more volunteers. All right. They've also been tasked with making recommendations for a master housing plan, so they've been working with our GAS specialist to learn about what we already have in the city. And most recently, they have acquired lots of new volunteers who are local business owners, so they've decided to take on a later initiative, which is to establish strong support systems for our small business owners and implement a buy local program. They have lots of really great ideas, which they'll be implementing in the near future. All right. And so, in addition to what the work groups are actually doing, we're looking to continually promote the vision plan, not only to recruit additional volunteers because we want as many citizens as possible to participate, but also to continue that community assessment because this is not a stagnant document. We want to make sure that we're moving forward and learning what our citizens want for our city. So, we've been promoting the plan on our city website, and we'll be doing a quarterly newsletter, the first of which will go out this month, and you can sign up and subscribe to that on our city website. We'll host a booth at the Summer Concert Series, and we've been working with local leaders to do presentations at neighborhood meetings as well as local places of worship. And then this is my contact information, and if you are interested, please let me know, and we would love to get you plugged into the right group. I will also be leaving my business card at the front desk for any citizens who would like to have it. Thank you very much.
Kelsey, thank you very much. Kelsey's only been with us a few months, she's already made a tremendous impact in the city of Smyrna. She's everywhere. We are tickled to death to have her here and glad we're able to convince her to come and join our team.
Well, thank you.
Next, we have Travis Landrum with our Parks and Recreation Department. Give us an update on some of the things that are happening in and around our Parks and Rec Department. Travis?
Good evening, sir. Again, as Mike mentioned, my name is Travis Landrum, interim director with the Parks and Recreation Department. It's my pleasure and honor to present to mayor and council the ongoings and things happening within the Parks and Recreation Department. We'll give you a little history of things that we've done here recently, things coming up currently, and things that'll be here in the short term. I'll preface everything by saying that everything that I highlight in here is accessible through our city website, and then, of course, to get more detailed information, you can also contact our Smyrna Community Center or our Wolf Center. So, just to highlight a few of the events that have taken place already, we have a movie by Moonlight Series. May 21st is when we kicked it off. The movie that we showed was The Good Dinosaur. In spite of the rain that we had the day before and actually that morning of, we had a pretty good turnout, had a good event where the kids had a little dancing competition down in the, at the front of the stage, and it was really good. If you didn't have a chance to come out, I definitely would encourage you to come out to the upcoming movie schedule that we have. As you can see on the screen, we have on June 25th, Star Wars Episode VII will be the next feature. On July 30th, we'll highlight Inside and Out. And then, of course, kind of an oldie but goodie, we might try and have a retro, you know, encourage people to come out with the hairspray and everything. We'll be showing Grease on August 27th. Going into the weekend of Memorial Day on May 28th, we kicked off our 2016 swim season. At Tolleson Pool, you can see on the screen also the hours of operation leading up till July 31st. Monday through Friday, we'll operate from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then on the weekends, we'll operate from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00. And then during the month of July, for those that might want to take a swim after work with the family, we'll have night swim dates that operate from 7:30 to 9:30, and this is Monday through Thursday during the weeks in the month of July. Also, at the pool, you'll have opportunities to take swim lessons, and then you'll have opportunities to reserve the Tolleson Pool facility for pool parties over the weekend. Going into the Memorial Day, we had a very, very extravagant Memorial Day ceremony through the partnership with American Legion and the Smyrna Veterans Committee. We had a great event. For those that were in attendance, I'm pretty sure you can agree, it was a beautiful day. It was a beautiful ceremony. We actually had the pleasure of two of our own members. Mike Jones offered remarks during the event, and Jess Haglen of the Public Works, he participated as a reefer for the event. It was a great way to honor those that have fallen for the freedom in our country, and if you didn't make it, I would definitely encourage you to try and come out for our next event in partnership with the Veterans Committee for Veterans Day or, of course, for next year. Our Summer Concert Series, we actually will kick that off coming up on June 11th. The featured band will be The Retreat. You can see the price listing on here. Residents for that table reservation for that concert are $30. Non-residents are 40. You would just need to show verification of being a Smyrna resident to attain that rate. The next date, July 16th, we'll have the Get Right Band, and hopefully, I'm not stealing any thunder from possible presentations in the future, but on the August 6th, that, of course, is our birthday celebration where we celebrate the city. The opening event will be The Mustangs, and then the main event, I mean, the main band for that event would be Banks &amp; Shane. There's a price difference on that concert. The resident rate is $40, and then, of course, the non-resident rate is 50. If you have not been to a birthday celebration in the city of Smyrna, I would definitely highly encourage it. There's things for everyone to do, young to old, and then, of course, it's capped off with an extravagant fireworks display at the end of the night. If you haven't seen it, I would definitely encourage you to come out and see it.
Mr. Landrum, just to be clear, these are the prices just for the table rentals, but the concerts are free to residents.
Correct. Correct. This will reserve you a table. You will have seating allocated for you when you arrive at the venue. Otherwise, you'll have plenty of citizens come out and kind of designate some area on the green and other areas, but this is strictly for the table reservations centered right there around the pond and in the circle in the front of the community center. The upcoming and ongoing projects, I kind of joke about this myself. At the community center, I want to say we probably got the world record for the most, well, the longest ongoing bathroom renovation project, especially for the size of that facility. But in saying that, there is light at the end of the tunnel. The bathroom renovation, along with the lower-level floor replacement, I can gladly say that with the leadership with Croy and the architectural firm, Escoonis Architects, the project is underway and is on schedule, and we're slated to have it completed at the end of the month, of course, in advance for our State of the City address by the mayor, and I think everybody would be thoroughly pleased with the outcome. Again, I had to joke about it, but, you know, we're getting it going and we'll have it completed by the end of the month. Also, the Riverline project, we're looking to have a pavilion and shade structure installed out at Riverline. We're in communications with our Public Works Department. We're currently in the planning phases to make sure that we get that up and running. Once the timeline has been determined, we'll definitely keep council updated through the weekly reports. And then with Zaxter, the community bike program, we're slated to have a fifth bike location installed. We've narrowed it down to two locations that we think will be more feasible with the bike program. That, again, is also being communicated with the Public Works Department to make sure that we pick a feasible location and we meet the parameters of being within another distance of a bike location in residential area. These photos here as I round out are just, of course, photos of the Smyrna Community Center and Taylor Bronner Hall. These are the flagships within the Park and Recreation Department. At these two facilities, you are able to host a variety of events from weddings to baby showers. Right now, graduation parties are the going thing with graduations taking place. We definitely encourage anyone that is interested in hosting any event at our facilities to contact those sites directly, or, of course, they can visit our website with the contact information you see posted on this last slide. And that I close out, and if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Travis, thank you so much for your report and for what you do for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. The third and final department head report tonight is from the Fire Department, and Chief Aker will be bringing that report to mayor and council tonight. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everybody. It's been a pretty busy second quarter for us in public safety in the Fire Department. Got just some highlights of some notable things that have happened. Smyrna Fire and Smyrna Police partnered back in April with Cobb County Public Safety Agencies and hosted a day-long public safety block party. We had that Cobb Park primarily targeted for the kids, a lot of fun things for them to do. That was very, very well attended, and we look forward to doing similar things again probably next spring. We had a pretty significant residential structure fire where some of our first-in-crew had to, or were able to successfully rescue a Smyrna resident from their second story without injury, and we're certainly proud of the job that the men and women do that work for the Smyrna Fire Department. Thankfully, that type of scenario doesn't unfold very often. Some of our Smyrna Fire instructors took the lead in the 2016 Metro Atlanta Firefighter Conference where they came and they taught different techniques and skills to all Metro Atlanta fire agencies, and this is specifically hands-on type training. Smyrna Fire took the lead in aerial ladder truck operations and thermal imaging camera use, so really proud of those instructors. City of Smyrna Fire Department has a medical director that oversees the operations of all of our paramedics. So, if you think of a paramedic really as the extension of the, in the field, the extension of the ER physician, and Smyrna, his name is Dr. John Knox. Dr. Knox was recently recognized last month by Georgia EMS Region 3 as Medical Director of the Year, so we're very, very proud of Dr. Knox. We're fortunate to have the partnership that we have with him in helping to ensure that Smyrna paramedics are as highly trained as they can be. Right now, we're on target to answer right at 6,000 calls, 911 calls this year for service, but we're also on track to answer just a little over 10,000 other customer contacts. And by other customer contacts, some examples are CPR, first aid training, car seat installations, public education, school visits, community emergency response training, and Citizen Fire Academy classes, which is going very well. As a matter of fact, we just recently graduated our last Citizen Fire Academy class, and I think several of them are here. If you were in the last Citizen Fire Academy class, if you would just kind of wave, and I'm so glad that you guys. Thank you, guys, for coming here tonight and letting us say thank you, and we hope that you all got a lot out of the program, and your participation is incredibly valuable for us. But, so, in this last class, we had Jim and Karen Carter, Allegra Goodman, Phil Arnold, Robert Davis, our own Dan Campbell, and Kristy Kane. The next class will be in September. Look for that information on our website. We also are really excited about a new program called Community Emergency Response Team, and essentially, the thought behind CERT, Community Emergency Response, is so that we can train small groups of people typically embedded within neighborhoods to do some basic first aid and CPR in the event of a larger-scale type happening that potentially could temporarily tax public safety. So, we're, right now, we have onboard and scheduled in October the first class, and we've got three different neighborhoods that'll be represented there, so it'll be a great opportunity for us to have one class and have three separate teams in three separate neighborhoods, and we look forward to that growing in the future. Deputy Chief Marcos, we found out two weeks ago, has been accepted into the next comp leadership class, so we're proud of Deputy Chief Marcos. And finally, we're about to embark on a pretty extensive capabilities assessment, and we're doing that in preparation for our strategic planning process that's scheduled to begin late summer. So, we're excited about that as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mayor, that concludes the department head reports for mayor and council this month.
Item 5 is land issues, zoning and annexation, A 2016-197, a public hearing approved code amendments to include landscape contractors to the list of permitted uses under the general commercial and light industrial zoning district city of Smyrna. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, this particular issue is, has to deal with outside storage. The general commercial and light industrial zoning district doesn't anticipate the use of landscape contractors as permitted use under Smyrna's current zoning district, so this is a proposal from Community Development to amend its use. And Ken Suddarth is here with Community Development if you have any further comments or questions.
As Ken is coming up here, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comment either for or against the change in the, in this code? Let the record show that there is none. It's actually Mr. Doug Stoner's purview, but I'm guessing he's going to let Mr. Suddarth give him the report, so Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, I know you had talked about this issue, brought to our attention about this issue. I want to let you kind of discuss in the sense of your experience over the years when it's come specifically to this category and why the suggested change.
Absolutely. Through the years, and I've been here for nine years, every year, we get requests from landscape contractors, and when they find out that the use is permitted, but they can't have outdoor storage, then they have to go elsewhere, which basically is forcing them out of the city for the most part. We continue to have that trend. The economy has recovered. There is a lot of demand for landscape contractors. The current ordinance places landscape contractors under the general statement contractors, and as a result, then it has a restriction about outdoor storage. What we've decided to do is that there is enough interest and demand going back many years that we really think it's time for us to address and bring our ordinance a little more current. And as you've heard me say in the past, our zoning ordinance needs to be a living document and not a stagnant document. So, this is one of those changes we feel is a living change for that. So, what you have in front of you is a proposed definition of what a landscape contractor is, so that it actually functions as a separate use outside of the general term contractor, as well as more restrictions on that allowance, meaning that, yes, you can have it in an enclosed building, which is what the current requirement would be, but now you can have it in the rear yard of the property, provided that that outside storage of equipment or materials or commercial vehicles must be screened from the public right of way and adjoining properties through the use of an opaque fencing, meaning that has to be blocked. You can't see through it. We feel that that in combination with any other existing requirements we have, including our NORs ordinance, will allow those uses to go in without adversely affecting adjacent properties. The last item that you see there is we are specifically allowing landscape contractors in our light industrial district, and that's because we allow contractors as a whole, and so we're... And so we're, since we've created a definition, we needed to list that specifically in the LI district. But the main thrust of this proposal really deals with our GC district on this. So having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Both staff and the Planning Commission had recommended this amendment for approval. Again, this doesn't override our noise ordinance. It still applies, so that if somebody is starting early, just like anybody has an opportunity to start early, because we don't really control business hours outside of any alcohol-related issues, they still have to comply with that. So if a problem occurs, there are other ordinances that we have to address that. So with that in mind, staff is bringing forward to you with the Planning Commission approval that you amend the ordinance by adding a definition of landscape contractor and then specifically allowing it in the GC district with some restrictions, meaning that it has to be in the backyard and has to be screened from public right of way and adjoining properties through the use of opaque fencing. And then lastly, is add that as a permitted outright use in the LI district. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken. If there's no questions, and we, I'm saying, we have the public hearing?
Yeah, there's no one.
Okay, I just want to make sure. If there's no questions, then I'm going to make a motion that we adopt 2016-197, approval of code amendments to include landscape contractors to the list of permitted uses under the general commercial and light industrial zoning districts for the City of Smyrna.
Second.
A motion second to approve this amendment change. Any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to note that I, one of the things that makes me comfortable with this amendment is that it is making sure that if you have property where you have residential adjacent to general commercial, you do have to have opaque fencing, and that answered any questions that I had about this. So thank you for including that.
Any comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Item B, 2016-225, approval of extended work hours for the Johnquill Village Redevelopment Project from 12.62 acres, land lot 559 and 594, northeast corner of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Spring Road, Benning Construction. The background, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, on, in April of 2016, the council authorized Plateau Excavation approval for extended work hours from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and did not allow for work on Sunday for the completion of the site work associated with the Johnquill property. The Johnquill Village General Contractor for Publix, Benning Construction, is requesting an extension of work hours into Sunday, three specific Sundays, June 5th, 12th, and 19th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30, and it's for a couple of purposes. One is the erection of the structural steel for the Publix building and also for some concrete pours.
This is Ms. Sharon Nullwich, this district lines, or this project lines in our district.
This is in my district. There was a lovely photo of it on the front page of the Marietta Daily Journal today, and this request, as earlier, when we approved the request for extending the work hours, so as the day like got longer, which was not unanticipated, this also was not unanticipated by myself or really by anybody in the immediate vicinity who is ready, they're all ready to get this project going. So this is something that I'm very comfortable with. Do you, Ken, do you want to give any more information about it?
Actually, Mike did a great job of summarizing what this was all about, just so that the public is clear. The reason we're hearing this twice is that Plateau was more, was the grading contractor, the site prep work, and we gave it to that. I felt it was appropriate to bring it to your attention when we're dealing with the contractor that's actually going vertical with construction. They're similar, but they're different in that regard. So if this request is approved, then I think we, you know, within the limitations that we have, anybody that's associated with this development can then can operate within that. But there is the issue about the Sundays that have been referenced, as well as the concrete pours, which also include the ability for them to start earlier than normal. And just for information purposes, they could start as early as 3:30 a.m. We've talked about this in the past with other projects, the need to get the concrete out there because, and to let it cure so that there are, the cement trucks are not competing with traffic, and there's also a drying technique associated with that, that they have to do that within certain temperature ranges and so forth. We have approved that kind of amendment in the past on other projects. So this, we'd wrap this up with regard to those three types of approvals for Johnquill.
That sounds good to me.
Yeah, I mean, from a staff point of view, we were recommending that it be approved.
Oh, yeah, well, and honestly, from the layman's point of view, from the person and the neighbor of the person driving by, they're not going to notice any difference from what we've already done with the extended work hours. This is, I think, this gives a layer of specificity that makes it easier moving forward through the summer and through construction. Thank you. Yeah, I'm ready to make, I'm ready to move that we approve item six, where are we now? No, I'm sorry, 5B. 5B, 2016-225, and this is approval of the extended work hours for the Johnquill Village Redevelopment Project. It is, and I want to read from here, this is from, so I'm going to go back from in the item details. And this doesn't have the work hours listed in the agenda item.
If you want to add it to your motion.
I would like, yeah, I'm pulling up the legislation text right now.
It'd be June 5th, 12th, and 19th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m.
So June 5th, 12th, and 19th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is 12.62 acres, land lots 559 and 594, northeast corner of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Spring Road, and the applicant is Benning Construction.
Second.
Motion second to approve this request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more, somebody. Approve 7-0. Item 7 is formal business, A 2016-206, the public hearing, approval for the FY 2017 budget. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, we've gone over the budget several times at our committee of the whole meetings. We held the first public hearing in council chambers on May 16th, and a couple of days thereafter, we had a public meeting where the public could come and ask questions about the budget. And we've been working on the budget now, I don't know, about three months it seems, and we've incorporated a number of changes, and what's before you tonight is what staff is recommending for approval, and this constitutes the final version of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. As you said, we have had a bit of a process to arrive at where we are today. We started three weeks ago with the formal budget presentation in here, and that was at a regular council meeting on May 16th. We also had two days after that, a public meeting right after that in the council chambers, and we had today, here we are for the adoption proposed for your consideration.
Just so folks will know, this is the final public hearing, and once Jared gets through with his presentation, I'll turn over to Ron.
And I think for the viewing public, just for the benefit of them, I know staff knows the staff well, and the council knows the staff well, but the two people who are presenting are the two staffers who are responsible for corralling all of the inputs and the documents in order for you to hear and see what the final version of the administration's proposal is. Jared Segman is our budget officer. He's been with the city for how many years now, Jared?
Pushing seven.
Remember the day we hired you? The exact day. We're very fortunate. We snagged, somehow snagged Jared out of the management fellow program, and he has found his way to a proper home. Thank you for that. And Kristen Robinson, who is our finance director, presenting the data for those of you who are viewing at home.
Both good catchers. Our pleasure to have you all working for us.
Speaking of the budget, we're looking at a total proposed budget now of $93,275. If you were here three weeks ago, you will recognize this is about $1.6 million more than we initially presented. So in tonight's presentation, we want to review what those changes were and then give you an overview of the other funds as well. You can see here, this table shows you the summary of changes, starting with that top line, the general fund has been reduced by $85,000. We discovered we had not been adequately budgeting for retiree benefits. OPEB, as you see it on the slide here, stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and in order to cover both our current costs and our future costs, we've identified a need to budget about $110,000 extra dollars this year. So to balance that obligation, we've done a couple of things. We split one of our capital projects. The library will continue to get $35,000 in FY 17 for their self-check kiosks, but we have pushed the RFID component of that project to FY 18. That saved us $85,000, which is what you see there in the table. And then the remaining monies that we needed to fund our OPEB obligation, we have taken from the general fund contingency, which is now proposed at $609,000. We had to allocate the OPEB contribution across our various funds, so the adjustments made to the special revenues fund total about $5,000. That includes both the E911 fund and the Hotel Motel Fund. Crowell Engineering manages our SPLOST projects, and the initial budget for the 2016 SPLOST was based on the assumption that we would be collecting all $15 million from the 2016 series bond in FY 16. In actuality, we will be drawing down about $6 million of that in FY 17 and the remainder in FY 18. So by taking those revenues out of FY 16, then, we also had to move some of the expenditures as well, and Crowell's recommendation was that we move $1.7 million from FY 16 to FY 17, and that is all for the Windy Hill Road Improvement Project. We've also been in communication with our bond council regarding the 2016 series bond and the FY 17 obligations for that. We are now estimating that our issuance and interest costs next year will total $52,000, which is about $7,000 then, less than we initially expected. Repayment of that bond is a budgeted project in the 2016 SPLOST, so the charge is, or the change is captured here. And I will note that the 2016 bond will be reimbursing the city for the acquisition of property, while the issuance and the interest costs will be reimbursed by the title ad ver lorum tax revenues. So the net result of these two changes is about $1.69 million, which you see reflected in the table. And then we had some other OPEB adjustments to the water sewer fund as well, totaling about $6,000. My final slide for you tonight is a sort of a high-level overview of the FY 17 proposed budget, since we've already gone into it in detail three weeks ago. I also include here a comparison to the FY 16 revised budget. And you can see the top line, general fund, is being proposed at a 5.5% increase. On the revenue side, we're expecting about a 7% increase in our property tax collections next year. And on the expenditure side, the increase includes nine new full-time positions at about $400,000. We've also got $850,000 in the budget for rising group insurance costs, and we've also got $125,000 for a tenure update to our comprehensive plan. Special revenue funds are up 7.1%. As mentioned, that includes our E911 fund and the Hotel Motel Fund, and we are projecting increased revenues from the tax on hotel nights in Smyrna, which is what's driving that increase that you see there. Capital project funds are up 40.5%. This does include the general fund, CIP, as well as the 2011 and 2016 SPLOST. You can see the total proposed amount is about $17.4 million, and I can tell you that the 2016 block, uh, SPLOST makes up $15 million of that, or 86%. So it's the large majority of that number you see. There is only one internal service fund. It is our vehicle replacement fund, budgeted at $949,000. That is a decrease from FY 16. We have budgeted for 18 new vehicles this year. 17 of those are replacements of existing vehicles, and one will be a new addition to our fleet. And then the last group of funds is enterprise funds, which are budgeted at a 22.6% increase over FY 16. And as I discussed at our first public hearing, this increase is largely due to infrastructure projects. We are proposing to spend about $4.8 million from our water sewer fund reserves to help cover these capital costs, with the biggest project being about a $4 million overhaul of the Johnquill sanitary outfall. The last thing that I will mention about this slide before I conclude is the FY 16 revised number. I will point out that it is $81 million. Our adopted budget for FY 16 was $74.8 million, but I just wanted to point out the increase is because we had unspent funds from FY 15 that carried over into FY 16, and we do prefer to use the revised budget numbers because we believe they are a truer indication of our spending for the current fiscal year. That concludes my presentation on behalf of the Finance Committee. I do ask for your consideration and approval of this FY 17 proposed budget.
Sir Ron Finley, who chairs Finance and Administration.
I want to thank the staff and the administration for the work that each department head put into forwarding their best opportunity at sharing what they anticipate next year's expenses, requirements, and challenges are so that we come to this conclusion. This is the prioritization the city places on how we spend and shepherd the taxpayers' dollars. We take this job most seriously, and we are proud of the work that's done over the, each year, but this year particularly with this budget, it being the largest in Smyrna history. We're pleased that we have a pretty good handle on where we are in anticipation of next year, both with the expenditures that we're anticipating with the new SPLOST dollars and how we're going to handle that with our partners. And we have left on the website, since we started the process, all details on the website for full review of the public. We've mentioned it now in two public hearings and one public meeting. We pride ourselves in being open about the process, and if anyone has questions, whether it's council members, and we're going into the public hearing portion, where anyone from the public can come and make their remarks. Does anybody have a question of the staff before we move to that public comment period? Thank you both very much, and please stay close because you may have questions that the public has that might be worthy.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to make any public comment about the budget, now's the time to do it. Mr. Carrington, we swear those folks in if they come to make that's money. Anyone that would like to make any comment, please step forward, give us your name. Well, you got to be sworn in first. Anybody that wants to make any public comment, please step forward. We just got one, so. If you just give us your name, address, and comment.
I'm Shawana Mayo, and I live in Shore Park subdivision. So I was at both of those meetings, one of the only citizens that attended, and I just made some recommendations and some comments as to how our taxpayer dollars, you know, some recommendations. And I wanted to know, did you guys take any of that into consideration? Was that, any of that implemented, any of the suggestions or recommendations that I made that day? I was the sole person here, so I just wanted to know. Should I move over?
Well, some of the questions were about walkability, and we did do a little bit of research into the Spring Road corridor, as well as the South Cobb Drive. of research into the Spring Road corridor, as well as the South Cobb Drive corridor, the LCI studies that we are about to undertake on those corridors. She asked a number of questions about pedestrian crossings and things like that, access from neighborhoods to commercial centers. And we did research that with our community development department and found out that we are on the cusp of beginning that South Cobb Drive study, including all of the public participation components that that will involve. So that will give residents like Ms. Mayo a lot of opportunity to get involved in the process and submit their feedback related to the walkability concerns. She also expressed some, some input about our public safety. And of course, we advised her that the Braves will play an impact, but we worked with our police department to present what we thought was a good recommendation for the time being. And as the need arises, of course, at any time, we can revisit this budget and add staff or personnel or other equipment as needed.
And if I could add, there is some discretion within the department prioritization of expenditures relative to those crosswalks, public safety asset deployment, et cetera, that they are comfortable with making decisions as needed.
Was there any other thing that you'd like to say?
I appreciate that.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly what you asked for.
Well, no. He brought up all of the concerns that I had and recommendations for walkability and, you know, police safety, and he addressed all of them. So there's a study being done, and we're on the cusp of it. So I'll just be waiting, and we'll just work together on it. And hopefully, you know, we can move forward. So he answered everything. Thank you.
I'd like to add also that a lot of infrastructure things that address walkability, those are also addressed through the SPOLOST budget, and that was voted on and approved, you know, and it's, there are some really fantastic projects and things that we have happening, and some that have already been enacted. And we've already extended the multipurpose trail, for example, in between Spring Road and Village Parkway. So a lot of projects are ongoing, but a lot of that won't necessarily be found in this budget, but is found in the SPOLOST budget.
Do you want to speak?
Could I please?
You have to be sworn in. I remember I asked at the very beginning if you want.
It will be short.
Well, it can be long or short.
It's just that it came up.
Anybody else who wants to speak, then he should step forward and be sworn in. I don't want to stop and swear individuals after individuals. Even if you, even if you just think you want to speak, come up.
Come in.
Okay.
I have to swear.
Have a seat, and then, first.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Cynthia Lawrence. I live at 1350 Overlook Cove in Smyrna. And my concern is simply that it appears that what is going on with the Windy Hill project might be a little bit behind the curve for what's going to be happening in our neighborhood, which is the Braves Stadium. And I only mention that because Chairman Tim Lee apparently did not make our group of council people here aware of it in time for us to react. So simply as a public service, I wanted to bring that to the attention of the council and all those who are aware of this, that Chairman Lee failed to make mention of that to our body here in order to be able to respond in an appropriate manner. Seems like we're going to be behind the curve, because it's not going to be finished by April 2017, if I understood it correctly.
I would just say this, I'm not defending Chairman Lee. This project would have been where it's at today, not so much for the Braves as it is the growth this west of us.
Right.
In West Cobb, Paulding County. When they did the Windy Mac Connector several years ago, they dumped all that traffic out in Windy Hill with no improvements. So it had nothing to do with the Braves.
Correct.
This will get traffic in the mornings through when the Braves aren't even playing, so.
Yes, sir, and that's all I was bringing to the attention of the council, is the fact that apparently we were left behind the curb because the Cobb County Board of Commissioners chose not to make us aware of what they were intending, which would impact our area.
They impacted us when they did the Windy Mac Connector, when they dumped all this, probably 18%, 19% more traffic travels on that road. And this is long before the Braves Stadium.
It's going to be even more when we get the stadium in as well.
Well, but people won't be traveling, this is like morning traffic, people going to work.
Yes, sir.
They won't be going to the Braves game in the early in the morning. I mean, I personally think that.
I hope you're right. I hope your assessment is right. I'm only concerned from the point of view that the Cobb County Board of Commissioners did not give us a heads-up in time for us to respond, because it takes time. I know you all work very hard at trying to perceive what will be needed and necessary going into the future, but you weren't given that opportunity in this particular instance as well.
We didn't know about it until they made the announcement, I guess in November two years ago.
We were all surprised, weren't we?
I was.
We can thank Chairman Lee for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else that was sworn in, any public comment concerning the budget?
Council and Mayor, I'm not sure that my comments.
Al, will you give us your name and address? Name and address, just for the record. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Al Graves. I reside at 1079 Pinehurst Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, for the last 60 years. Of course, a lot of you know that. But anyway, I don't know that my comments are actually appropriate at this particular time. And if not, I will make them into citizens' input. But first, I would like to pose a question to you folks. As far as you're concerned, do you feel like that the city of Marietta and the city of Smyrna are approximately the same size from a population standpoint?
Al, I mean, this hearing is about the budget.
This is, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
So equivalent cities, you would expect might have similar budgets to perform the same function. And what I'm referring to is an article in the Marietta Daily Journal of this past Sunday, and it outlines the budget as they're proposed in Marietta. And the following fact is in evidence in this article. The 2017 millage rate of 5.6. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay. Is a decrease of .429 from last year's rate. And down a little bit further down, it indicates that, according to city officials, this will amount to about a $50 decrease on a home appraised at $300,000. And it has become a clarion call in Smyrna that the millage rate in the city of Smyrna is going to be 8.99. And from past history and current activities, it apparently is locked in cement. And calling back from a memory of many years ago, this rate was established to take care of building the city complex down here in the Market Village with a promise of a reduction when the expenditures on those projects were finished. And somehow, that got overlooked. So what I'm leading up to is this. Do you folks really take stuff into consideration like that when you consider the budget, how out of whack the amount you're calling for to run this city stacks up against what they're asking for? They have equivalent services, police, water department, and all the things that are furnished in that department. And I know this is not timeless, since you've, for all intents and purposes, approved this budget. But I'm just saying, I wish that you'd take a look at it and see if it don't merit a little bit of consideration, because any way you cut the cake, you're looking at a taxed millage rate that is approaching double what the city of Marietta operates on. And they do, must be doing a pretty fire job. So, and also, one other comment, they do not have a $15 basic charge on their water bill. I call to confirm that, which is a thinly veiled increase in this 8.99 tax fee, because its funds are routinely transferred back. So all I'm saying is, we're too late in the process here. And at my age, I don't know what I'll be here next year. So I just would like to prevail on you people who are down here telling citizens that you are the very best stewards they could get to protect their funds. And the budget that we're proposing for '17 is a far cry from $52 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. I want to just comment on one thing. When we reinvented our downtown, there was never a promise to, we were going to increase taxes and then we'd lower them after we finished. Actually, the year that we, there was a millage increase. A good bit of that was for public safety. We added more police officers and more equipment. But we never said that we would have the millage rate at a certain level until we got everything finished, and then we'd lower it. We never said that. And I would submit to you also, Marietta has always had a very low millage rate, because they have their own Boards of Lights and Water. And so they get a good bit of revenue off their electricity that they sell to their citizens. So they may have lower taxes, but they're, but they're getting the revenue from the citizens through the Board of Maryetta Lights and Water. So I would just say that, just for clarification. Okay? Next person, let's, Mr.? Next person speak.
Trying not to be repetitive.
Please, your name and.
Alex Backery.
And your address, please.
3459 Shawnee Trail. Hopefully, I'm not repetitive from the previous speaker. I missed a little bit of it. But again, this article is quite mind-boggling to me to have a comparison that, a budget that we had $75 million last year, and their budget this year coming up is going to be $50, $56 million for a comparable city. I just don't understand myself, again, trying not to be repetitive, how they can do a millage rate at 5.3 or 5.6 in the article, and we're still at 8.99. I just feel there's a heck of a $17, $18 million budget differential for a comparable city, and yet the employees are all getting 3% raises in Marietta. And again, comparable police, fire, and utilities. And they don't have the base charge on the water rates of $15, and yet they can still keep their millage rate in the 5.3, 5.6, and for years, we've heard the 8.99. This isn't even close. I don't understand how this has happened. And I want to make a suggestion. You did not advertise the budget, as I heard earlier, for the people to come on a Wednesday, on a workday. It wasn't in the utility bill. I never saw it on the magnetic signs that we have around the city. One person showed, and last year, two of us showed. You should have it in the evenings, if it's going to be a workday, like 7:00 in the evening, and advertise it more properly, so people can come out and make, be aware of having better questions, rather than only one showing and then terminating the meeting. This is not good communications. But I applaud Marietta that they're getting reductions, and yet we're getting increases. And 8.99 versus 5.6, something's drastically wrong in the budget and spending.
Anyone else that was sworn in? Pardon me?
Anybody respond to any of that?
Well, you can, yeah.
As a point of clarification.
Let's get to the microphone, so they can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this, I don't squash the keyboard. Okay, I just looked up the article, and as a point of clarification, their total budget for Marietta is $322.9 million. $53.7 is the general fund portion.
What's their total budget? $3 million?
$322.9.
$322.9 is their total budget. The $53.7 million that Mr. Backery was referencing is the general fund, and our general fund is $44,476,683. So our general fund is well below Marietta's, just as a point of reference.
And the population disparity, they have about 5,000 to 6,000 more residents, and they own an enterprise called the Board of Lights and Water, which generates revenue and so forth.
Kristen, I appreciate that clarification. You know, it's always dangerous when you, when you pick out particular numbers and try to make a comparison to push, to push a particular agenda. And those clarifications are good for the, for all the public. We have better than 50,000 residents that live in Smyrna, and it's, and it's very important they, that they get that right information. It's, it's difficult to take a budget from Smyrna and say, why doesn't it compare to Marietta? Well, it doesn't compare to Marietta, because it's not Marietta. It's Smyrna, and you've got to look at all the revenue sources from all the different pots to make an accurate assessment. And each, and each municipality has to decide for itself what's appropriate. And I believe this budget that's been presented to the mayor and council is a, is a very good reflection of, of the services that are in demand for the citizens that live here in Smyrna. And with reference to the public input, this is the third time the public has been invited to come. And I, I think public comment on budgets is, is very, very appropriate. But this is the second one that has been held in the evenings. And I know the, the noon budget workshop that was here, that was held here was advertised. Advertised in the paper, was posted on the door, was placed on the website. It wasn't, if it wasn't in the water bill, that's something that we can address for, for next year.
All right, Mr. Finley?
I think that was good input relative, Mr. Backery, on making sure we post it. We try to do the best, but we did announce it at two public meetings, that there would be a day meeting in addition to the two night public hearings, so that we could get every citizen who wanted to make input and couldn't make the nightly meetings, that maybe could make a day meeting. It may be appropriate in the future. We do more available at a different time. We'll explore that, and certainly, our goal is to have the most input. But the public website has had this data posted on it for a month, and we've invited participation and feedback from that source as well. And we encourage every citizen to be informed about it. And it is, it is a challenging process to go through the detail, excruciating detail relative to the numbers, because it is, it can be confusing. Government accounting is different than business accounting, so it's a challenge for a lot of us. And what I want the public to know is that your team, the staff of each of the departments, and the department heads, and then the senior staff who took those inputs and helped fashion this document, and then the deliberation that this group, the Finance Committee and the rest of the group have done, this is the best work product that we have to offer you. We feel like it's a very responsible, diligent, accurate, and a forward-looking way of shepherding the taxpayers' money that we have been entrusted with, our most important responsibility. And we appreciate everybody's input on this. And, Mr. Mayor, have you concluded the public hearing?
Yes.
It is then my obligation as Chair of the Finance Committee to move approval 2016-206, the approval of the 2017 fiscal year budget.
I have motioned a second to approve this FY2017 budget. Is there any other discussion amongst council? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Item B under Formal Business, Ordinance 2016-1, Approving Amendment to the City of Smyrna Code of Ordinances, Chapter 55, Prevention and Protection, Article 1, in general, to add Section 50-8, and to amend Article 2, Section 50-27, 28, 33, 35, 37, 39, 40, and 50-41. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is an update. We want to amend several sections of Chapter 50 that deal with three particular areas. One is to define special use permitting for consumer fireworks. Two is clarify the markings of the fire lanes. And three is to update title language throughout the ordinance.
the ordinance.
This is under the committee of Mr. Derek Norton. Mr. Norton, it's Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Jones said, this is, there are several general fire prevention and protection code amendments in this section, but really, this is in response to the legislation passed by the General Assembly last year, allowing fireworks, and then amended this year, which put time parameters around when citizens can discharge fireworks. As a guy with a nine-month-old baby and a pregnant wife--
What?
--those compelled to shoot them off at 11:30 on a random Tuesday or Wednesday night strikes a nerve with me. And I am, this will add a special use permit to be able to do that after hours, and I think it'll provide adequate difficulty for citizens to do that. Are there any discussion on this?
No, I don't care about that anymore.
If there's no discussion, I'm going to make a motion to approve Item 7B, Ordinance 2016-14, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 50, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1, in general, to add Section 50-8, and to amend Article 2, Sections 50-27, 28, 33, 35, 37, 39, 40, and 50 through 41.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. You can't vote one time. That was, we recorded 7-0. Item C, Ordinance 2016-1, approve an amendment to City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Article 1, Section 46-1, Noise Regulation. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, this section is being amended to reflect the changes that was, that occurred as a result of House Bill 727 regarding the use of legal consumer fireworks. And it dovetails into the amendments that were just adopted that Councilman Norton discussed. And it allows our noise regulations to run in concert with the fireworks regulations.
Mr. Derek Norton, who chairs the Public Safety Fire Committee--
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This, just like the previous item, gives our law enforcement more teeth to enforce the fireworks discharge in the city. And at this time, I'd like to move to approve Item 7C, Ordinance 2016-15, approve the amendment to the City of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 46, Article 1, Sections 46-1, Noise Regulations.
Second. Motion to second to approve this amendment. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0. Approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Item D, Resolution 2016-04, Adoption of Resolution Authorizing Agreement of Sale Between the DDA, City of Smyrna Regarding the Acquisition Rightofway for Streets in Connection with the Windy Hill Project to Be Sold by the Authority to the City of Smyrna and Authorize the Mayor to Execute Any Related Documents. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Yes, sir. We have some experts in the audience with us that can help with this. The DDA will be acquiring rightofway in advance of the improvements to Windy Hill Road, and it approves the issuance, if adopted, of up to $15.85 million of bonds for this sole purpose. And upon acquisition of the property by the DDA, the rightofway will then, title will be transferred back to the city under an agreement of sale. And this agreement of sale serves as security to be issued with the DDA bonds. This agreement of sale also solidifies the relationship between the DDA and the city for the purposes of the Windy Hill rightofway acquisition. And let's see, we have Tom and Gordon here with the bond firm, Morgan Keegan, to help with any questions that council may have.
Mr. Ron Finnell, who chairs the Finance and Administration Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular project is a part of the voter-approved SPOST and Co. Engineering and the team that are going to be implementing the project. This allows us to be nimble in the way we manage the project, and we're excited about the taxpayers' approval of this project. So hereby, if nobody has any questions, I hereby move adoption of Resolution 2016-04, Adoption Authorizing Agreement of Sale Between the DDA and the City of Smyrna Regarding the Acquisition Rightofway for Streets in Connection with the Windy Hill Project to be sold to the, by the authority to the City of Smyrna and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents.
I have a motion to second to approve this resolution. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-1. Ms. Wilkinson voted in the negative. Item E, 2016-220, approve to enter into consulting agreement with Raftelis, is that right?
Raftelis.
Raftelis, same thing. Financial consultants for $75,800 to conduct a water and sewer rate and financial planning study and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Mr. Jones, the background.
Mayor, this is a consulting agreement. Raftelis is a company that specializes in the review of finances for municipal water and sewer systems and other public utilities. They're going to conduct a water and sewer rate and financial planning study, which will evaluate the enterprise funds that go to the water and sewer system in great detail. And then, to a slightly lesser degree, they'll be taking a look at our stormwater utilities and our solid waste utilities and looking at those rates. So things like the gentleman brought up about the base rate, that'll be part of that study. It'll take them several months. There's a lot of data to go through, but at the end of that, what we'll have is an evaluation of our existing rate structure, an evaluation of our CIP budgets over a number of years, a review of our renewal and extension funds, once we establish what level of funding we want to keep in those. And it'll tell us long-term whether or not the rates that we're charging our ratepayers are adequate for each of those four utilities. This will come back to the council in form of a presentation. There'll be a formal recommendation made by this group, and we expect to have those results. It'll be year-end. Our first meeting with this company will probably not occur until August, once they've had an opportunity to take the data. And what they're going to do with that is, they will create financial models for each one of those four utilities. I've worked with this company in the past, and they're certainly some of the best at what they do in this area, and we recommend council approve.
This falls under-- Oh, you've got Corky Webb down there.
It is?
It's Corky Webb.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Jones did a very good job explaining in detail what this consultant group is intending to do. One thing I want to mention, and I do this for some of my smaller clients, when you're working up a study or an evaluation of this type on water and sewer, the bottom line has to be, it has to be in the black, meaning we have a certain amount of expenses and revenues in the water and sewer fund, and at the end of the day, we've got to cover those expenses. This makes show that we need to change that rate. As Mr. Graves mentioned a few minutes ago, our base rate's $15. They may recommend that it drop to 10 and increase our per-thousand cost. But we are looking at a very comprehensive, taking a very comprehensive look at everything, not just the rates, but long-term, trying to figure out what we do need to have in reserve. And that reserve fund is something that's critical to the city because it keeps us from having to go to the bond market and borrow money. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve Item E, 2016-220, to enter into a consulting agreement with Raftelis, financial consultants, for $75,800 to conduct a water and sewer rate and financial planning study, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve this agreement. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-1. Ms. Bluestein voted in the negative. Item F, 2016-221, approve to approve, approve to award RFP 16-042 for the council chambers' audio/video update to Summit Systems in the amount of $76,953, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Jones, the background.
Mayor, the council chambers does not currently meet the needs of today's audio and video equipment that we're currently using. Some of it is very up-to-date, but the collection of the data and the transmission through the feeds are not up-to-date, as so many people have commented over the last several years. This is an upgrade that's well overdue. It's right at $77,000 for this upgrade. It'll be upgrading the monitors, it'll be upgrading the speaker system, it'll be upgrading the feeds to the cameras. When the public is here, looking at presentations, the presentations will appear much sharper, and that video image will also go out on Charter for those that are watching at home. When the folks are watching, the council members during a presentation, they'll often see the council members looking down, and that's not that we're not interested in what's being displayed. In fact, it's the contrary to that. That's where the video feed for mayor and council is, to review this information that's being displayed behind us. Those monitors will be brought out so we can take a look at the speaker and the public while those presentations are being made. I believe it's long overdue. The equipment will be ordered if this passes tonight, and installation is scheduled to begin in late August. The reason for that delay is the court calendar has already been set, and the contractors indicated to us that they need five uninterrupted days in council chambers in order to have that equipment installed properly. And that is the first five consecutive days that hasn't already appeared on the judge's calendar. Recommendation is for approval.
This is in Mr. Ron Finnell, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Our goal here is to make sure that the public gets to see and can read and understand some of the detailed documents that we're presenting, particularly in the Community Development Department, when they're presenting various proposals for projects. There are degrees of detail that you can't read on the fuzzy screen above. And in the back of the room, I've been told by several people, sometimes, audio-wise, it's hard to discern some of the debate underway or some of the comments made by the public, and we want to make sure we do a better job of that. We're several generations behind on technology, just because we haven't done anything on this front in quite some time. So hopefully, this will improve the experience both for the viewer on our cable system, but also for those of you who are here in the room, and give you enough detail to feel you could understand what issues are being debated and see how each of us vote in real time. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 2016-221, approval to award RFP 16-042 for the council chamber audio/video update to Summit Systems in the amount of $76,953, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
I have a motion to second to approve this, or award this RFP. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 7-0.
Hopefully, right after Labor Day, you'll see the improvements.
Item G, 2016-224, approve to remove a portion of the retirement commitment of general fund, fund balance in the amount of $1,442,620.65. Mr. Jones, the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, when she presented the budget, I didn't give her a lot of kudos for the budget, even though she has worked tirelessly with Jared. I was saving it for this particular agenda item. Our finance director came to me several weeks ago, and she's going through the budget, and there was, you take a look at fund balance, and it's split into a bunch of different categories. And this particular item was a very large category of fund balance that was committed specifically toward retirement plans. Our budget each year contains expenditures associated with retirement plans, but those plans are not funded out of this particular line item. And when you go back several years and you look at how the dollars were placed into that line item, it plays out like this. In October of 2014, a majority council voted to commit a portion of the FY '14 budget surplus, and that surplus was taken by formal action to commit it in this line item because there was a retirement audit that was being completed. And at that time, the council wasn't exactly sure what that cost was going to be, so they set aside money in that fund. And then, subsequent to that, the board, the council received notice from GMA of what that dollar amount was going to be, and that dollar amount was $1,602,911.93. And council voted to fund the payment of that, as it should, and all of the payment of that money was made available out of four different accounts. Well, the amount of money that was taken out of the water fund was appropriate for the water fund, same for 911 and same for Hotel Motel, but the general fund dollars were paid with unrestricted cash. And that $1,442,620.65 did not come out of the committed health care plan that was intended by this board, but rather came out of the unrestricted cash. I say all that to say this, because the mayor and council formally took action to commit those dollars, you must take formal action to uncommit those dollars and return them to unrestricted cash. And again, thank you so much, Kristin. She does a wonderful job in the finance department. She brought this proposal to me. We looked through it and spent some time with this, and it's absolutely appropriate thing to do. Recommendation is for council approve to uncommit these funds and return them to the general fund uncommitted.
Mr. Ron Finnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the record reflected of the debate at the time, within the minutes, we took the appropriate response to the inquiry about our obligation being met for OPEB, which is other--
Post-employment benefits.
Post-employment benefits, easy for you to say. But the goal of the city in relation to our employees is to make sure they have adequate funds for the work they're doing, but also to plan for retirement and the planning component by a majority of cities in the state is not being appropriately budgeted. The City of Smyrna, help me with this data point, but the City of Smyrna is in the top 10 in the state, if not the top 5% of cities that are paying attention to this item, and we are budgeting according to what we understand our longer-term obligation to be. And by taking this action, it undoes an error, just a simple accounting error at the time in reflecting what the action we took back in October of 14 is. Mr. Mayor, I move approval to remove a portion of the retirement commitment to general fund, that's general fund balance in the amount of $1,442,620.65. That's 2016-224.
I have a motion to second.
I didn't make a motion there, so--
He did.
Wrong item up. Oh, yeah, you got the next one up. Can the clerk please reflect item number 2016-224? There we go. See, if you're seeing it up there, you can keep me on the right path. I have a hard time seeing--
I have a motion to second. Is that correct?
Got it. Ms. Nilo would second it. Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
Who's not voting?
Got one more.
Okay.
It's approved 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item H, 2016-232, establish the southeastern property line of 38 Atlanta Road at its intersection with the northern property line of 3121 Northview Place, authorize the mayor to execute all documents incident thereto. Mr. Jones, the background.
This property is generally referred to as the-- This property is generally referred to as the Reed House and the city attorney, Scott Cochran, is here with specific questions about the encroachments. But in summary, the Reed property encroached on an adjacent property owner years ago and slight encroachment and then the, but the, the adjacent property owner slightly encroached on the Reed property. And there was an existing fence that's still there today, which everyone assumed was the property line. Well, when the actual survey come back, it wasn't the actual property line. The property line was off a little bit. So we, we did a third survey for a property boundary line agreement for the adjacent property owner. It's not a huge change. It's, it's really more of a text change, but because a new driveway was going in on the adjacent property owner's property, we had to get the line right. So this is a, basically a boundary line agreement and we end up netting an additional 871.2 square feet, which as you know, is not very large in terms of land. It was less than 1/100th of an acre difference between these two, two property lines. You have a series of figures there, but if you have specific questions, Mr. Cochran is here for you.
This is in Mr. Doug Stoner's district, Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and our city administrators explained it very well and the property owner, the adjacent property owner is happy to get this corrected because he has been waiting to pour a driveway and obviously he did not want to inadvertently pour where he apparently encroached and at the same time, we had the encroachment. And again, this is, as Mr. Jones, as Mr. Jones explained, very straightforward and at the end of the day, we're getting additional 800 and some square feet to the Reed property. Beyond that, it's, that's really it, Mr. Mayor, in the sense of the very straightforward situation here. If you may have any questions, I'll, I'll refer them to our attorney to explain.
Any other questions, comments? And Mr. Stoner, go ahead and make your motion there.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'll make a motion to approve item H 2016-232, establish the southeastern property line of 380 Atlanta Road at its intersection with the northern property line of 3121 Northview Place and authorize the mayor to execute all documents incident thereto.
Second. Motion second to approve this property line adjustment, I guess. Okay? Any discussion, although some favor the motion. It's approved seven, zero. Item A is commercial building permits. We have none. Item nine is consent agenda. Mr. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have four items on the agenda for the council to consider this evening. Item A is approval of mayor and council's final meeting minutes from May 16. Item B is approval to close Riverview Road for two weeks between Nicholas Drive and Dickerson Drive. The dates on that closure, though it's not listed there, is June 27 through July 9. Item C is approval to allow the Smyrna Optimists Club and Smyrna Public Safety Foundation to hold a 5K race on September 5, 2016 from 6:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. to benefit projects for Smyrna Optimists and Smyrna Public Safety Foundation. And finally, is item D, is an approval for Market Village merchants to host an event called Tailgates and Touchdowns and to close the upper portion of Market Village, West Spring Street around the fountain area on Sunday, August 27 from 1 p.m. until 9 p.m.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval with two technical changes. One is a scribbler's error that I reflected to the clerk for the meeting minutes from the last meeting and the second was to clarify the date of June 27 to July 9 for the pending weather relative to the closure on item B. Is that acceptable, Mr. Counsel? Is that acceptable in that fashion? Okay.
Second. Motion second. Although some favor the motion, please vote. Approved seven, zero. Committee reports will start tonight with, starting out, Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank all of Ward 1 citizens who have attended a series of neighborhood town halls that we've had over the last couple of months. We've had over, well, well over 150 citizens have attended. Been to Galleria Manor, Farmstead, Afton Downs, Vining's Point, Spring Hill and Argyle Estates and by the end of the month, we'll have done Falling Water and that'll be all seven residential communities in Ward 1. So if you have, if you missed one of those in your neighborhood, I hope that you'll contact me with any questions that you have. I'll be happy to provide you with an update on what's going on. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, share an event with y'all that I was, I had the pleasure of attending on May 25th. The Braves Foundation and Academy Sports and Outdoor came to Argyle Elementary that morning and they brought a couple of Braves players, Homer Brave, and had them all in the community room at Argyle, the gym, first and second graders who had improved their behavior and test scores this year. And then they all let them outside where they had a, a new bicycle for the summer for each one of them. And so I just wanted to say a special thank you to the Braves Foundation and Academy Sports and Outdoor. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I don't have a report this evening.
Ms. Sharon Nullowitz.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to thank Kelsey Scott for the update she gave us earlier tonight for where we stand with the Vision Committee. It's been wonderful to have her on board and it has been fantastic to see all of the hard work that the different work groups for the implementation process that they're doing. It touches so many parts of Smyrna, so many residents are involved and what's been really nice is to see new folks getting involved as the vision process continues to move forward. If you're interested in getting involved with the process, you know, Kelsey said this and she meant it, reach out to her, get in touch with her, kscott@smyrnaegov, because there are plenty of ways for people to still get involved with the vision process and we do welcome any resident who would like to become involved. I also want to take a moment to thank Kristin and Jared. They did an outstanding job with the budget, with making sure that we had hearings, that there were opportunities for people to talk. I appreciate these citizens who did come and speak tonight or at the other hearings that we had and everyone who emailed their input or called one of us and let them know what their thoughts were about the budget. So I'm glad that we have that ready to go moving forward for another great year. I don't know if anybody saw the front page of the Marietta Daily Journal today, but the headline was Boom Town and they were talking about us. And they were specifically referring to the fact that Belmont is nearing completion, Johnquill is really getting going. You saw we approved the extended work hours to, to continue those tonight on the agenda. And so much of this is happening, it's easy to say, oh, well, it's happening because of the Braves, but just like people saying, oh, well, the road work we're doing is because of the Braves. Ah, this was in the works for a long time. It's something that has been a long time coming. It is something that we, has been happening to, you know, in terms of the road work to address Smyrna's population growth that we've had over the past few years. The progress that you're seeing, you know, at the, at the corners of, with Belmont and with Johnquill, that is happening because, thank goodness, the economy has been in recovery now for several years. Smyrna is only going to continue to grow. We're about to surpass Marietta in terms of population and we really are a gem when you look at the inner ring suburbs in metro Atlanta and I'm just delighted to see the progress that we've made and very excited to see what we're going to have happening moving forward. With that, I yield.
It's Charles Welch. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to mention, kudos going out to the, to the budget administration and our finance department, everybody that worked on that budget. I'll say that the, the citizens in Smyrna expect a certain standard and that's what we try to give them with the budget. I'm not saying that there's not a line in there that couldn't be reduced or another line that needed to be increased, but to maintain the standard of services and everything that we provide to the citizens of Smyrna, this is what it takes to run this city. And I think that we, we run a tight budget. I don't think we're, we waste any money. I won't say anything, but, but for the most part, we run a very tight budget and do the best we can with what we've got to work with. And I commend them for working so hard on it and think they did a very good job. That I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. I just want to announce a meeting that I'm having tomorrow night, a community meeting. It's going to be at the police department and the neighborhoods around the Ivanhoe and Sherwood neighborhoods. And I hope that if anyone's listening, they'll join us tomorrow night at 7 at the police department. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to also comment in the sense of the budget and the sense of what that means for the coming year, particularly when it comes to community development. And with the approval of the budget, our ability to move on several studies that are critical for us to, as, keep that standard of quality that Councilman Welch mentioned. So our ability to do the LCI study on Spring Road, which is going to be very important and when it comes to the land use and transportation down that corridor, also a state DOT grant that we got matching money there again for what we're doing on South Cobb Drive between Concord Road and Wendy Hill. And also, we obviously have money in the budget, which we're required to do every so many years to update our comprehensive plan update that we have to do, of course. And then finally, looking at a Georgia Tech study, working with Georgia Tech and a lot of their students and folks to work with us, looking at impact issues down, particularly at the gateway with the Braves. So just again, another point of our budget with this approval, some things that we can get moving on and come back with information to this council so we can make informed decisions for the future of this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ron Finell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to add kudos, as I did earlier, to the team, not just to Jared, our budget officer, and Kristin, our finance director, our administrator, who shepherded, herded and cracked the whip with department heads to make sure that the prioritization that was adopted in tonight's budget was properly reflective of what we as a responsible government can provide and to show support for our employee population who makes us look good every day and who provides the services that you are paying for. I want to just say, I'm proud to be a part of this team that has presented this and passed this budget and continues to deliver quality service every single day. If I didn't do this last time, I don't remember, but the Oak Hills Community HOA Annual Meeting was held. They invited me out by the pool and it was taco night, so I was thrilled to be a part of that, but thank them down there near the East-West Connector for providing an opportunity for me, for me to update folks. I want to thank Jamestown for their continued investment down in Ward 7 on the river and the project that we approved tonight. Hopefully, that brief two-week window will impair very few, but in, and get our project done so that we can get that vertical construction to market as quickly as possible and as safely as possible. And I then know that's the number one concern. Speaking of safety, I want to again commend our public safety resources, but remember, school is out for all school systems now, so there are a lot of kids out there, a lot of young people who are driving for the first time in the summertime, so please join me in just sharing the concern and care for that. And then finally, an obligation I have outside of this group, but it involves this group. I just want to remind everyone that a week from tomorrow night, the Cobb Municipal Association meets. This month, we'll meet at the Threadmill Complex in Ostell at 7 p.m. and we'll discuss the recent election results and we have a special guest speaker, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority Chairman. Will give us an update on that project, what it means, how that came about and what it's going to mean to the South Cobb development area, which does have some impact based on historical Smyrna data and what it can mean for the South Cobb area. Cobb County continues to be a preferred destination for people who want to engage in business and move here. So everything we can learn as a group to improve our situation, we want to make sure we share with our colleagues across all the cities. With that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Mike Jones, anything?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for mayor and council. The unanimous vote on the budget isn't taken lightly. We see that as your endorsement of our efforts and thank you for those very kind comments and I promise you that we will do our very best to, to spend these funds in the, in the most appropriate manner. And we recognize that these are tax dollars, they are splotch dollars and they are the public's dollars and we will do our very best to execute this budget.
Mr. Cochran. Ms. Graham. Before we get to the citizens, I would just say this about, this is, the honeymoon's still on, so. First budget, this thing better be right.
Yes, sir.
If it ain't. Let's see, we do not have a, I'm letting you off because I'm tired. We do not have a show cause hearing. We do have some folks that have signed up for citizens' input. Alec Backley, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments. It's a topic.
My first comment tonight is the Reed House that the city bought for 1.8 million when the appraisal rate was 4.26. An absolute outrageous price for a house that the city had no clue what they were going to do with. Now it's in the budget for an additional 1.2 million in renovations. That puts it up to 3 million. Now I've heard from the city that they'll rent it out. For what? I still haven't got an answer to any of what you're going to rent out risking 3 million for a house when you have Bronner down the street to accommodate these events. This makes no sense again of the city getting in the real estate business. Another example, coming up in '17, the city owes an additional $960,371 on a payment of interest on Smyrna Grove Hickory Lakes. Last February 1st, they paid an additional $631,000 on Hickory Lakes, Smyrna Grove. We're still paying interest rates after the place was supposedly sold. And again, we're into paying the interest till I understand 2027. We should have had referendums when the city bought Hickory Lakes at 16 million. We should have had a referendum when you bought the house, the Reed House. We should have had a referendum when you had the Smyrna Commons for 8 million with a $5 million loss and a referendum for Concord Road, just to name a few, for 20 million. I see all these beautiful displays of having people involved in workshops, committee meetings to get feedback and get involved in the city, yet but when the city gets involved in large million-dollar purchases, we are not involved whatsoever. I find this to be a kind of a conflict that I don't quite understand. I truly hope in this last three and a half years, the city does not get involved in any more real estate. It has shown a loss and I applaud the person in Ward 5, was the only person voted against the purchase of the Reed House. It's, we don't know what we're spending or renting out for $3 million. You're speculating with taxpayer dollars and this council's got to be accountable to spending our money. Thank you.
Al Graves, 1079 Pinehurst Drive, Southeast.
General topics. Yes, Al Graves, 1079 Pinehurst Drive, Southeast, Smyrna, Georgia, 30080. I would like to address a couple of comments to this 15 million splotch that's going to finance the Wendy Hill expansion. I read that from the gist of the article I read reporting this, it indicated that this was a splotch financed project from funds. Also, it indicated that the Downtown Development Authority was going to issue bonds to finance this project. I have heard rumors outside of the printed press that this thing is going to be somewhere between five years and nine years until it's final achievement of the project. And my, and also, as part of that article, it indicated that the interest on the loans that are issued by the Downtown Development Authority is going to be paid out of general funds of the city of Smyrna. And I always understood from the basis of a splotch, it was a self-supporting financial plan over and above the obligations of the city to finance a project with very little impact on that. And there was no indication on what portion of the total funds that would be required to bring that project to fruition was going to be initially issued. to bring that project to fruition was going to be initially issued to buy this right of way. So my question is, is the full amount of the, of the bonds to cover the splotch, which is 15.6, I think it was, is that going to be the initial issuance? And will the city of Smyrna be paying interest on that from six to nine years? When there's no possible way that all of those funds could be expended? Or is there going to be a setup to make incremental issuance of the bonds to cover the expenditures that's incurred by the construction of the project? It didn't in any way address this problem, and I just had a curiosity that if we get all the money initially and we're paying interest from the day of the initial interest, looks to me like we'll be paying a lot of interest and holding a lot of money, that we'll be getting no return on our investment.
Hi.
Shewana Mayo, 3549 Sherwood Road, Southeast Smyrna. Good evening. Racing speeding budget recommendations, your topic. Hasn't changed. Mayor Bacon. I'm coming to you, and I'm asking again, we had a speed study done in our subdivision, which is Sherwood Park. And the findings were that it wasn't sufficient enough for us to get speed bumps or stop sign. I'm asking again, where they placed the actual speed sign was at an intersection. And as per Officer King, it was placed there so it could be chained around a pole, so therefore it wouldn't be stolen. However, my research has shown that the roadway section is pertinent when you're doing a speed study. It should not be placed at intersections, areas where people accelerate and decelerate because then the data will not be correct. So if you ever heard that term, garbage in, garbage out, if the data's not correct, it's going to come out that we don't have a speeding problem, and we do. We had a fatality recently, this past week, Monday, at Atlanta Road and Wendy Hill speeding. We had on Ward, Ward Street, I think, and Powder Springs Street, a car go into someone's home. We have an issue on this street. And we started this discussion with one of our religious leaders by saying to you guys, have the courage, but we as citizens look to you for your discernment and your wisdom. And we're just asking again, we were promised some calming measures, a flashing light, something on our street to stop this speeding down our road. So I implore you, I'm begging you guys to listen to me before we have another fatality. Thank you.
Cynthia Lawrence, 1350 Overlook Cove, Smyrna, Georgia, race congestion. She may have left. That's the end of the speakers for tonight, citizens' input. Anything, have, anybody have anything else to bring up? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:54.